The Ponca City School Board to order. Will you join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rip.
Just pray with me. Father, we're here tonight to do the business of the Ponca City Public Schools and Board of Education. So please be with us so we make the best decisions for our district, our staff, and our students. They are very important to us. We will thank you for the cooler weather, the rain, much-needed rain, and as fall approaches, the turning leaves and holidays and the family activities. Thank you for all of your blessings. Please be with our men and women of the armed forces as they protect us here and abroad. Bring us peace. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Be seated, please. Jan, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Clark.
Present.
Dr. Kim Kane.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
This is true.
Present.
Our first order of business is the presentation of the Employee of the Month and Friends of Education Awards. Our first is the Certified Employee of the Month, and that is Liz Hargraves, the new principal at Lincoln Elementary School.
Liz Hargraves, the principal at Lincoln Elementary, has made it her mission and her highest priority to ensure school success for Lincoln Elementary. As a new principal, the magnitude of requirements, accountability, and the safety and educational success of the students served is always overwhelming once everything becomes a reality. Liz has taken on this major task with confidence, pride, and if she ever gets agitated or flustered, it is certainly not noticeable. With over half of the Lincoln staff being new to the district, Liz has worked diligently to build community and an educational family with the staff. It is obvious the teachers at Lincoln have fun while they are spending countless hours serving the students at Lincoln because Liz has fun herself, no matter how great the challenge is she may face. In addition, the staff knows they are supported by their leader. She listens to their ideas, and they truly feel they are a part of Team Lincoln. One of the teachers at Lincoln provide a quote that I'm sure speaks for the entire staff. She said, "Mrs. Hargraves has done an excellent job of stepping into her new role as the principal of Lincoln Elementary. She has handled many situations with patience and grace. I appreciate her, and I am proud that she is my boss." Not only has Liz gained the respect of her staff, but she has also gained the respect of her peers and supervisors. As a first-year principal, she is willing to offer her support and share ideas with other principals. Central administrators appreciate her can-do attitude and her willingness to learn. That's why Liz is a great candidate for the October Certified Employee of the Month.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Liz. Well deserved.
Well, I only have a couple of words to say, and I couldn't do it without a wonderful staff. I mean, it takes everybody, so thank you.
Thanks so much. Well deserved.
Congratulations, Liz. Next will be the Support Employee of the Month. We have two this month, Marty Ladd and Misty Henneger. They are in the Transportation Department. Marty is the director of the department, and Misty is the secretary.
I am very excited to give this award. Okay. Marty Ladd and Misty Henneger deserve to receive the district recognition of Support Employee of the Month for many reasons. Marty Ladd is the director of Transportation, and Misty is the Transportation Secretary. Transfers are one of my responsibilities with the Ponca City Public School District. So each year when students transfer from school to school within the district, it is my duty to coordinate the bus routes and relay the information to school sites so transportation is smooth and safe. For the last two years in Ponca City, our district has experienced very high enrollment numbers in our K, first, and second grade classes. Classes have filled to capacity, and I have been forced to find room for overflow students and then coordinate the bus routes with Marty and Misty. Each time I call Marty or Misty to find out the number of the bus needed to accommodate a student, they are cordial and professional. They go out of their way to make an often difficult duty a little easier. They work tirelessly to coordinate all the buses, ensure pickups are routine, and get students where they need to be to receive a quality education. When I served as a building principal, there were also instances in which I had to call the Transportation Office to discuss bus incidents or issues with Marty or Misty. Every single time, I was treated with professionalism and an attitude of teamwork. We are extremely blessed to have a transportation department who is so willing to work in a cooperative, pleasant manner. I make phone calls to this department often on a daily basis and receive the help and cooperation I need every time. It is this can-do attitude and willingness to work with others for the betterment of all students who are affected by transportation that reflect the reason Marty and Misty deserve this award.
Congratulations to both of you. Our last award will be to the Friends of Education. We have four individuals for this award. Ken York, Ed Latimer, and Eddie and Deb Randall, and these are volunteers with our robotics team, number 476.
Yeah, Ed Latimer's not here.
There we go.
Let's look at this a minute, and then, okay, that's fine.
All right. This is such a pleasure to be able to not only nominate, but recognize these special individuals for their time and commitment. First, I'll start with Eddie and Deb Randall. They're truly dedicated and involved parents, raising three children in the Ponca City education system, who are committed to helping Team 476, Pohai Robotics, continue to demonstrate success. They have dedicated themselves to the continuation of our robotics program, especially during a transitional period. They are constant encouragers, always willing to offer assistance before it is requested. They are helpful in identifying and organizing events or procuring and collecting items needed, like T-shirts for the robotic T-shirt cannon. They have substituted when the program had no designated sponsor. These parents have been instrumental in keeping Team 476 alive when leadership was transitioning. Additionally, they have been incredibly helpful in guiding me as a new sponsor. Not only involved in robotics, they also support several Pohai athletic organizations as parent volunteers, like softball, basketball, and soccer. Eddie and Deb epitomize the "we believe" spirit, as demonstrated through their consistent and continued leadership and support. Both are humble individuals who show strength in family values and volunteerism. This nomination is one way, I feel, I can demonstrate my thankfulness and an opportunity to recognize them for their behind-the-scenes commitment. Okay, the next one. This is Mr. York. Sorry, Ken York. Ed Latimer cannot be here. He's away on business, so we'll include him in this. Mr. York and Mr. Latimer have been instrumental in working with our students who are members of Team 476, Pohai Robotics. Both strong in community involvement. They've been consistent volunteers and mentors for our students for several years. What, approximately?
Fifteen.
Okay, fifteen. I had the numbering correct. Fifteen years with the organization. Both men have gracefully remained consistent leaders, especially during this transitional period of sponsors and location changes. They mentor our kids during evening meetings, often multiple nights a week during build season, by showing them how to safely use tools in the lab, develop, design, and engineer operable robots, program units, and develop strong values as a team player. They are both enthusiastic role models who demonstrate a love for learning and leadership. Both Mr. York and Mr. Latimer deserve this recognition for the commitment to our district and dedication to our students. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners, and I would imagine Mary would like them in the back for a photograph. While they're doing that, our next order of business, 3.1, is comments from the public. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Not seeing anyone. We'll move right on to item 4.1, the state testing results and the dropout report. And I believe Barba Cusek is going to give us this presentation. Yep.
We have some reasons to celebrate this year, and we've got lots of work left to do. That's a never-ending job with state testing. I want to share just a little bit of our state results today, and then I want to talk to you about some other things that we feel like are equally as important as far as information for our students' success within the Ponca City Schools. First of all, I'm going to share with you our OCCT math results for grades three through eight. The green obviously is our 2014 results. As you can see, we had some decline in third-grade scores, fourth-grade scores, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade was a little up, and eighth grade. In grades three through eight, last year was the first year that our special ed students had to take the regular state test. Previous to this, they took a modified test. They were testing the same standards. However, they were given fewer questions, or I'm sorry, fewer options to choose from, and there were maybe three questions on a page as opposed to six or eight. So there were just some things like that that were different for these kids. So these scores actually reflect all students taking the very same test. And so we did see some declines, not as much at the, at West Middle School as we saw in others. But those are things that Mr. Stafford and Terry and I have discussed, ways that we can enhance the instruction and the interventions for our special ed students to close these gaps.
Barbara?
Yes.
The eighth-grade students in '14 were the seventh-grade students in '13?
Yes.
And the sixth-grade students in '12?
That's correct.
So you could follow any one class that way?
Yes. Yes, from sixth grade, they were blue. They were, seventh grade, they were red, and they were, eighth grade, they were green. Now, part of this, in previous years, your students that took Algebra I also took the eighth-grade math test. Last year was the first year that they either took eighth-grade math test or Algebra I. So previous to last year, those students that were enrolled in Algebra I, their scores basically were duplicated because they took the eighth-grade test and the Algebra I test, and both scores counted for eighth-grade results. Last year was the first year that they took either the eighth-grade math test or the Algebra I test. So that is some of the difference with your scores.
How much difference in the tests themselves?
There's a big difference in...
Over all three years? They change them every year?
They change them.
This math, the test they gave this year and the last year and the year before last, are they all different?
Yes. They're, it's not the same test, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. It's a different test. So they're testing different standards or standards that are higher level.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying is the eighth grade, this year, the eighth grade last year, is it the same test?
No. It was the same test. The difference is, in the 2013 school year, all eighth graders took the eighth-grade test plus the Algebra I scores were figured in on the 2013.
So seven, so the two previous years, 12 and 13 was the same?
Yes.
Looks like there's a spike the second year of the three-year test. If you follow your blue, burgundy, green, almost in any class, the second year seems to be higher. And then there's some, a little bit of a drop-off, other than the seventh grade's an anomaly. And that could just be the testing, where they in '13.
There is a slight difference. The eighth-grade test is slightly more difficult than the seventh-grade test, but it's not a significant difference if you look at the percentages of the student's success on those tests. But there is like a 2% difference in how students perform statewide on the eighth-grade math test.
But isn't there about a 20% drop from seventh to eighth?
Yes, and part of that is, part of that is, well, you're looking at from the 2014 to 2000, yes, that is correct.
And Robin, that's a statewide drop. I mean, it's...
It's not just us?
It's not just us. I mean, if you look at proficiency rates across the state, the proficiency rates are lower on the eighth-grade test than they are on the seventh-grade test all across the state. And it's been that way ever since, I mean, I can't remember a time when it wasn't like that.
I think that goes back probably to Don's question about the test itself could generate that.
Okay. Yeah, there's more algebra kind of questions on the, not algebra, but more questions that test algebraic reasoning as students are in the eighth grade and approaching the ninth grade, which is typically when you take algebra for the first time. So you're going to see more of that on the eighth-grade test than you are on the seventh-grade test.
But when you look at the eighth-grade scores overall, and you see the decline from 79 to 64, part of that is that those students that are taking algebra are no longer counted twice. They're only counted once. Any other questions about math? Reading scores. Again, we saw a slight decline, well, 10 points in third grade, a little bit in fourth grade, a slight decline in fifth grade, a little increase in your reading scores from previous year in sixth grade and seventh grade, and a slight drop in reading scores in eighth grade. And again, the biggest explanation we have is the OMAP for those special ed students went away. And again, this is all students taking the same test, no matter whether they were on an IEP or not. This also included our students, our portfolio students in our special ed classes that take a modified test, they have to demonstrate their proficiency. Those are students in our multi-handicap classes, so those scores are figured in as well. Any questions about reading? Science scores. We've seen a significant drop in the past two years. In the 2013 school year, the cut score, the test changed, and the cut scores were dramatically cut, and there was a big controversy that the committee met to set that cut score. And the state superintendent did not carry forth the desires and the recommendations of that committee to set the cut score at their recommended level. She decided that that was not low enough, and so therefore, or high enough, I guess, actually, and set the cut score herself, basically. So with...
Barbara, just the thing to remember about these tests is that these are criterion-reference tests. And so that's diff, you know, when you think of a traditional test, you think of a test that somebody gives, and, you know, 90 to 100 is an A, and 80 to 89's a B. And so you have set levels in there of what is a passing or failing score. But in a criterion-reference test, what you do is you administer the test, and then you have a committee that comes together, teachers, usually maybe a university subject-level expert, a testing person from the State Department, and they set, and they look at the test, and they, and in the, we have a year that we administer the test before it becomes official. But they, but they look at those student scores, and then, and then they look at the test questions, and then they decide what should be proficiency. So it could be on a 36-question test that the committee decides that proficiency should be set with, that you should get 28 questions right. They could decide that it's at 20 questions or 15 questions. Depends upon the difficulty of the questions, okay? And then their expertise in that. So it really is very subjective, okay? And historically, we've had a couple of examples where the state board has not accepted the recommendation of the committee in setting of cut scores. The first time that happened was back during the Keating administration on the cut scores for Algebra I. And the state board arbitrarily decided that for a student to be proficient, they ought to get 70% of the questions right on the Algebra I test. The result of that was, for years, we had terrible proficiency ratings on Algebra I. Don and Barbara, you guys probably remember that, that our scores were always low on Algebra I, all across the state, they were low. Finally, in probably about 2005, they made some changes to the test, they put the committee back together, and the next time through, the board accepted the cut score recommendation by the committee. Result of that was, we saw proficiency rates go up. The same thing happened this time in that the committee recommendation, it never got to the state board. The state superintendent rejected it on her own, didn't take it to the state board, and then took a different recommendation to the state, what she thought, or what her, I'm not sure who all was involved in that, but what the State Department thought the cut score should be at. And the other thing to remember is, when they set this cut score last year, we did not find out about the change until the middle of the summer. So they didn't follow any of the normal procedures or protocols, so...
Anyway, it goes, every year's going to be different.
Every, you know, it is...
You don't know if it's going to be which way or the other. You can't really compare years past.
That's correct. And that's, again, one of the criticisms of this type of assessment, is that we don't have consistency in the cut scores, so it makes it almost impossible to compare year to year.
And this year, over half of the students in the state of Oklahoma failed the science test.
If I remember right, every, every school district is going to look very similar to this statewide.
It is.
Due to the change in the cut score.
For the fifth-grade assessment, this cut score, they had to score 40 out of 45 in order to score an advanced score. So it's, you know, it's a pretty rigorous assessment, but we have, have at least 50% of our students in the state of Oklahoma that did not pass this test.
Barbara, would you outline for the board what we've done to try to increase our proficiency rates in science?
This past summer with, in elementary science, Terry and her curriculum staff analyzed the science standards. They went through all of the science kits that we use, re-normed those kits, correct, Terry?
Reassigned all of them according to the new standards.
And so we have, that's what we've done as far as elementary goes. I sent all of the sixth, seventh, eighth, and the high school science teachers to a training, a two-day training in Stillwater, to look at the standards, to really go in and analyze those standards, to work with other school districts to find out what they're doing, what do we need to do, and they all felt like that was, was good training, something that they could bring back and implement. We're also looking at, I mean, there aren't many districts in the state of Oklahoma, obviously, that did well on the science test, if over half the students failed. So we're continuing to look at that data, to analyze the data, look at the areas that we were low in, and make those changes in our curriculum maps this year. We also have the option with ASPIRE testing, which is with ACT, to benchmark test those students, so we can look at college and career readiness standards for those students. Those teachers will have data on their current students that are sitting in their classes today, and those are just some, a few things that we have in place for this year, that we should see better results next year. We'll look at end of instruction assessment next. Algebra I, we saw a decline. Again, with Algebra II, geometry is about the same. English II, English III, we saw a slight decline. With US history, it has maintained its about 73%, and we saw a big drop in biology. When we looked at our biology scores, because as you can see, those, even last year with the change, we maintained a relatively high score as far as the state is concerned. There were a few issues that we had this year. There were two different tests that were given. Each of these tests had their own cut score, so it was a different assessment for the kids. So depending on whether you received Form A or Form B, your cut score was different. We also had a situation that we had a teacher that was not in the classroom for at least half the year, and so that was, it was a difficult, difficult situation. I think the staff at Pohai did their very best to do everything they could to work with those students and to prepare them. The biggest thing was on test day, though, that we had technical difficulties again, so that those tests started and stopped and started and stopped. And at this point in time, the state did not give us the opportunity to disqualify those, those tests. We were told basically, you know, just hold on, and we'll get it working, and so the students had to sit and wait, as we've done in past years. However, in past years, they allowed us to go in and retest those students, and we were not given that opportunity this year. So our, our teachers really believe that those, these scores are not an accurate reflection, and I, I believe that, too. As you can see, that even last year, with the first year of that new assessment, their scores were much higher. And as you will see in just a few minutes on the next slide, you will see our ACT scores, and you will see how our students compare to other schools in the state. Any questions on the EOI? With our math, I will tell you that we have purchased iXL Math Program, which is similar to accelerated math that the elementaries and middle schools use. I spoke with a teacher today that was very excited about the progress that her students are, are making. She said her kids have done over 22,000 math problems already, and that's not occurred before. She said with the paper, with the book, they wouldn't have done that. So they really have looked at the data, they've gone in and have customized this basically to the needs of the students. They are basically using their textbook just as a resource, and she feels like that they are really making more progress than what they've used with the past programs they used, which was Cognitive Tutor.
Is the boot camp you're referencing, is it voluntary, and are we getting good participation from the students?
We have, boot camp will start in, well, I guess it has started. So what they, yes, it is voluntary, but the fact that it's once a week, and it's really targeted at those kids, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and so that will, we will get better gains from that.
Are we getting good participation from the students?
I don't have an accurate count right now, but it's better than what we've had in the past years, because the kids have always had the opportunity to opt out of that, and many, most of them did opt out, but we've not had that situation. But I don't have an accurate account for you, but I can get that and have it for you for next board meeting. Any other questions about EOI? Percent of ACT tests, ACT students test... Percent of ACT tests, ACT students tested, and this is really what what we're interested in. We participate in the state testing because we have to. This is actually giving us a good indication of our, the college readiness for our students as they leave our high school. As you can see, our district is above the state average on the ACT. We're above the state average in college algebra. We're above the state average in social sciences. We're above the state average in college biology, and we're above the state average in students that meet all four of those criteria. Now, on the bottom of that, you see the college readiness benchmarks. Our goal is for our students to be at least, score at least an eighteen on the ACT. We're expecting higher than that. A twenty-two in algebra, social science, twenty-two in biology, twenty-three. If our students score make, score this high on our ACT, then we know that they are college-ready, and that is our goal this year. We have shifted our focus to college and career readiness standards using ACT. We started this process by bringing middle school and high school teachers together, looking at the standards, looking at the ACT. It's something that's not going to change, it's been there for a long time. Our people believe in ACT, they believe in the results that we get from the ACT. ACT has created an assessment that begins with third grade and runs through sophomore year of high school, and so we have aligned our sixth grade curriculum up through high school with ACT. Our students will take this Aspire Test after we return from fall break. It will give us a readiness score, so each year, we're going to look at those students and see how they're progressing towards their college and career readiness standards. Our hope is that by the time they are a junior and taking that test, their composite score is at least a twenty, if not higher. ACT tells us that we follow this and we continue to to track this and we offer our students the interventions that they need, but that's a very realistic goal. So that is our, that is our goal, that is our benchmark for ourselves. We understand that our OCCT test is important for our district, but we believe that this is where we really want to focus. If we can make sure that our kids are college and career ready and we've prepared them for that, then we've succeeded. We just received our PLAN scores the end of last week. The PLAN is an ACT test as well. Eighth graders take the explore test and sophomores take the PLAN. So basically, these students that took this had been in school about a month, so actually they're ninth grade students, taking a test that we will look at to see if they're ready. Again, a thirty-one on the ACT is perfect. So our students scored with English at a fifteen-point-eight. We're a little bit below the national average in math, we're just about there. Reading, just slightly below. Science, we're right on target and with the composite slightly below. So when you look at these scores compared to how we scored, and these, the PLAN test was given to every sophomore student, whether they were, whether they were on IEP or not, also sophomores took this test. So this is an accurate reflection of what our kids know, according to the ACT standards. So when you look at this assessment and you compare this to what our EOI's look like on our state assessment, to us, this is a more accurate reflection of what our kids really can do, and this is.
This is, when was this taken?
This was just taken this September. We just got the results back last week. And so if we can get these students by the time, you know, they are at the end of their junior year, to score at least a twenty, eighteen was the goal, if you remember on the previous slide, eighteen for, let me go back and look at that. English, the twenty-three for reading, twenty-two on the math test and twenty-three on the science test. We're not far away from that goal, and this is for all of our students.
Were all the special ed students included in this?
Yes. The only ones that were not were our multi-handicapped kids that are, that take a portfolio. Other than that, every sophomore in our high school and our alternative schools took this Our graduation rate, we struggled in two thousand and ten and eleven at sixty-four percent, two thousand and eleven and twelve at seventy percent, and for the past two years, we've held it at eighty-two percent. I really thought we were going to be closer to eighty-five percent, but it didn't happen this year. But we have worked really hard, and you're going to see on the dropout report, our our schools have worked really hard at bringing those kids back. Those kids that, well, let's see, our alternative school last year graduated twenty students from Wildcat Academy. Previous year, we had graduated one student from our alternative site. Those students didn't figure into this calculation because most of those kids were fifth-year seniors, but we felt like that was the right thing to do, to bring those kids back and help them earn their high school diploma. So even though we didn't see the rewards on paper, to us, it was a reward because those kids are, now have their high school diploma, and it was well worth those efforts. We're already on the roll, and we had eight graduates already this summer, and that was as of the end of September, that, so they will calculate in next year's graduation rate, and we also have several that will graduate in December. We had one that finished last Thursday. So each week, we are getting those kids and helping them be successful in our alternative ed program. Any questions?
It's a lot better than it was a few years back when you was on, before Marvin on the dropouts, you remember, I can't remember.
Okay, here.
The dropouts, when you were on before, we had struggled.
Yeah, really bad.
I don't even remember now, the percentages were not good.
You're going to be shocked at this this dropout report that I'm going to share with you in a minute. Any any questions over the testing? I really think that our alignment with ACT and and the resources that our teachers have with ACT are going to benefit our students. Whether we see those results actually on the state assessment, who knows? You know, who knows if we're even having a state assessment? We're supposed to have one in in December, and we still don't have a testing company, so we'll see how that plays out. Any other questions? As you can see, we've had a significant drop in our dropout rates. At the high school, we had two students last year. We had eleven students at the alternative schools. We had one at East and one at West. The one at East and West, those are students that left our district, and we don't know where they went. We don't know if they, if they went to school someplace that's out of state, because we wouldn't be able to locate them if they were in the state of Oklahoma. Our eleven at the alternative school, part of those were with Cher, some of them were with Wildcat Academy, and some with Teen Pep. But again, some of those students left the high school, went to one of those alternative schools, were not successful there, and then left us. But to have a total of fifteen, as opposed to last year, we had a total of twenty-seven alone at the high school. So you can see that our alternative programs are working, our high school staff is doing a better job at making connections with those students. I think the mentoring that we are offering at the high school and just those shifts in our focus on students is paying off for our students at Funk City High School.
What's the total attendance from two thousand and ten through fourteen? I mean, are the numbers about the same of students? Because obviously, more students could impact that, which makes this even better than two thousand and fourteen.
Yes.
More students, less dropout.
No, we have less kids than we had last year, right now, but we're higher than we were in two thousand and ten.
Fourteen is higher in students than ten.
Probably two hundred. Oh, yes.
Probably two hundred.
Yeah, probably two hundred kids.
With forty or fifty or sixty fewer dropouts.
Yep.
Yeah. Fifty-nine in ten.
Yep.
Any questions? Some good things are happening at our high school and our alternative schools, and it's really, it's paying off for our kids.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yes.
Thanks, Barbara. Next on the agenda is five point one and two, the superintendent's report. Will talk to us about the October enrollment numbers and then a possible change to our next month's board meeting.
As of October first, we have five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight students enrolled in the district compared to five fifty-three fifteen last year, so we have a fifty-seven student difference. Basically, that is in, majority of that's in two locations. Our enrollment at grades six through eight is down thirty, and we anticipated that. We knew that we had a small fifth grade class that was going to go to the sixth grade last year, and then we have twenty-nine less four-year-olds than we had this time last year. So some of that is related to, at the beginning of the year, we stopped enrollment because we could not find a, an early childhood certified teacher. So and by the time that we we got our numbers solid, some of those people had either enrolled their children in other locations or had just decided to keep them at home, whenever we had space become available. So the high school enrollment is fourteen hundred and ninety-eight kids. Last year was fourteen ninety-nine. We're up a little bit with our three-year-old speech and our skills class at Union Elementary. So anyway, fifty-two fifty-eight compared to fifty-three fifteen. Any questions? All right. The next item, we received a email last week from, I think maybe two weeks ago, from the State School Board Association, where they informed us that on November, I believe it's the eleventh.
Tenth.
Tenth, November tenth, the State Department of Education was going to have a, one of their regional meetings. You remember that with the limited decision by the legislature to drop Common Core, the State Department put a plan together that they were going to go around the state and have meetings to allow people to come and and discuss what our state standards should look like. At that time, I think it was the intention of the of the setting state superintendent that she would write the new state standards that will be in place. The State Board did not approve the process of her writing the new state standards. They kind of took the position that we're going to have a new state superintendent in January, and so there's no reason to go ahead and get this process started and have it start over again. But this process of holding regional meetings that already been established, company that already been hired. And so I put this on here to determine, to ask the board whether, what your pleasure is on whether or not you believe we should rearrange our meeting schedule so that board members, if they choose to, can attend that meeting, whether you want me to just designate someone from the district to attend. I've had a conversation with a couple of superintendents who have had this meeting in their area, and what they have told me is basically what happens is that the individuals that are responsible for the meeting start the meeting with explaining what's happened with the Common Core, that the state, that the state now has to write new standards, and then they have some group activities for those who are in attendance. They have tables and individuals set at tables, and they fill out cards where they, you know, what do you think the ideal school would look like, and does those kind of activities. The meeting is, has a one-hour time limit. They do not go past that time limit, and the discussion that takes place is a discussion between individuals that are at table. There's not like a big question and answer period with the facilitators of the meeting. So that's what I know about the about the meeting and about the process. My personal opinion is, and this is my personal opinion, that this is an exercise in futility, because my guess is, whatever report is generated by this process, that whoever the new state superintendent is, is going to put that in File thirteen the first day they get to office. Anybody?
What do y'all think? To be able to attend it, for all of us to attend, we would have to reschedule the October board meeting. It's the same night. That's the conflict, or November, I mean, the November board meeting. That's the conflict that would be there.
I don't see any change in the board meeting.
Don, doesn't Judy? Personally, I agree with Dr. Pennington. I personally don't, but if the board wants us to go. I do think if we elect us a board not to attend, change our meeting to attend, I think we should ask Dr. Pennington to send a representative. I think the school system should at least be represented at the meeting.
We'll have somebody there.
Somebody.
I think that'll work.
Okay.
David, are you okay with that?
Okay.
We don't need a motion or anything on that.
Nope, all right, okay.
Okay. Item six point one is the agenda with commentary. Six-two is the minutes from last meeting. Six-three is the consent calendar. It's the agreements under ten thousand dollars. I've looked at most of those, and I'm sure most of you have. Most of them are small dollar amounts or Booster Club fundraisers that are paid for by the, out of the activity fund of the Booster Club. There's only two of any significant dollar amount, and we've approved this previously or or at least talked about it. One is the demolition of the house directly east of Roosevelt School that I believe is scheduled to take place, Brett, this, next week, Thursday and Friday of this week, that's right. It's about eighty-five hundred dollars. The only other one, I think, needs a little bit of discussion. For those that may not know, Josh Henderson, I believe was his name, our resource officer at the high school, has left the police department and is seeking employment elsewhere. So to replace him, the way the existing contract reads, it's a pass-through cost from the police department directly to us as the school. The new person they have put in is at a higher salary, higher on the pay scale than Josh was, so it's about a ninety-four hundred dollar increase. We're kind of caught in the middle here. We really can't do much about it. That's who they've elected to put down there. I have asked Brett that before next year's negotiation for this contract, to at least open negotiations and maybe try to stabilize the cost somehow, whether it be a flat fee instead of a pass-through. I'm not trying to negotiate it for him, but to at least discuss it with the police department to see what our other options are, so we will know a year in advance what the cost would be, so we wouldn't be caught shorthanded like this. But the current arrangement for the officer that is now at the high school is about ninety-five hundred dollars a year more his salary than Josh's was, so that's something I think we probably need to go ahead and approve. The last item is six point four, the surplus resolution, and I think that auction's tomorrow, and it's primarily buses. There's a little bit of furniture, but I think Marty's got some used buses that he's really trying to sell. So does anybody have any comments or question on any of these items? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve six point one, two, three, and four in their entirety.
So moved.
You have a motion from Don and a second from Judy? Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Trup.
Aye.
Next item, consideration of vote to approve or not approve the following items. Seven point one was basically the financial reports that were discussed in the finance meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments on those? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve seven point one, A through K.
So moved.
Have a motion from Marvin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Don. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Tru. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point two, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve adoption and revisions to the board policies. If you remember, at last month's board meeting, Dr. Pennington went over a major list of changes, primarily due to new laws, and it was the National Attorney's recommendations. Here's what we needed to change to match up with the laws. He went line item by line item for each and every one. Anybody have any questions on those? If not, we'd ask for a motion to go ahead and approve those.
I'll move seven point.
Have a motion from Don to approve all the recommendations to policy revisions we discussed last week, and they're in the report from last month. Have a second? Second from Judy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point three, a couple of change orders. The first one is for Lincoln Elementary, the re-roof and the HVAC project over there. It's basically to build a box to protect the water lines that go to West Junior High. Right, Brett? And it was something that we really don't want to disrupt the water lines to West Junior High. It's kind of a concrete box of some type that will protect them. That is item A. Item B is down at the East Grand Administration Building. It's a, several little odds and then items, but the primary big one, we're still having some problem with the beams and some of the concrete that we're uncovering to make the building secure and safe. And it was for eighteen thousand, and the first one, I think, was about four, four thousand. Any comments or questions on any of those change items? I'm sure they talked about them in the property committee. If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve both A and B to seven point three.
I'll make a motion to approve seven point three, A and B.
Have a motion from Judy, a second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Motion carries.
Mr. Newsom.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don. Sorry about that. Seven point four, consideration and vote to approve or not approve a contract between Unique Travel Tours and Ponca City Senior High Corral. It's my understanding, the plan next spring is for the corral of the high school to go to Colorado on a trip. This, all these expenses will be paid for from the activity funds. This is just a contract with the bus company for the transportation.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Don to approve. And a second. Second from Marvin. Comments or question? Call for the vote.
This is Tru.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye. Motion carries. Seven point five, we have several significant events and weeks that have been designated by various organizations for the upcoming month. We'd like to highlight some of these, and they'd, they're asking the board to approve these. That's a significant event or a week. I believe November seventeenth through twenty-one is American Education Week. National American Indian Heritage Month is the entire month of November. Freedom Week, which is tied to the Veterans Day, is November tenth through fourteenth. Oklahoma Education Support Personnel Week is October twentieth through twenty-fourth. And I think it's good to recognize that we have almost four hundred support personnel in the district here, and this is to recognize those people. Anybody have any questions or comments concerning these? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve these weeks and board to sanction these official weeks.
I'll make a motion for seven point five, A, B, C, D.
Have a motion from Judy, and a second from?
Second.
Don. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Tru.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point six is consideration of and vote to approve or not approve a resolution to K County Election Board calling for the annual election of the Board of Education members in wards one and five. This is a requirement to be able to have the election. Have a motion to approve?
Yes.
From Don, and a second?
Second.
From Marvin. Thank you, Marvin. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Do we need an executive session?
No.
Okay, we do not need executive sessions, so seven point seven, we will bypass.
Did you do seven-six?
Did I skip one? Yeah, we just did that.
Okay.
We just approved seven-six. Seven-seven, so we'll skip down to seven-ten. We do need to approve that. Vote to approve or not approve recommendations for terminations, reassignments, resignations, and employment of personnel shown on the attached detailed personnel report. Comments or questions?
Move approval.
Got a motion from Don to approve, and a Marvin, a second. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any new business?
Yes.
We finally have new business.
We have new business. I have asked the boards to approve an application to the State Department of Education for deregulation. If you may remember that in, I think, September, our golf coach resigned. That was an individual that was employed as the golf pro at the country club. He resigned his position at the Ponca City Country Club and subsequently resigned his position as our golf coach. Last week, we made the decision to offer that position to one of our high school teachers, who is a science teacher. He had a sixth-period class in, help me, what was it, Shelley?
Earth science.
Earth science. And so we were, we were able to restructure the schedule, except there were a few earth science students that we could not move because they also have some other advanced placement classes in their schedule. And so what we proposed do, to do is to have Mike Grimes, who has a sixth-period conference, to teach on his conference period for the second nine weeks, to teach the rest of the sem, Earth science is only a one semester class. And so what I'm asking you to do is to approve the deregulation application so Mike Grimes can teach earth science the second nine weeks at the high school.
Isn't this the same type deal that we've proved almost every month?
We've done a couple of these.
To be able to allow them to teach on their planning period or so. It just happens to be a little bit different arrangement.
It's a little bit later than we normally do it, and it's only for a nine weeks. It's not for the rest of the school year. And Mike's agreeable. I mean, he, he's agreeable to doing this, and we do pay them. Negotiated agreement sets out what the payment will be for that.
Questions or comments? Need a motion to approve this? Probably do.
Yes, we do.
I want my combustion to approve what, the deregulation, so that Mike Grimes can teach.
Earth science.
Earth science. Second nine weeks.
Have a motion from Judy.
Second.
Second from Marvin. Questions or comments? Call for the vote.
This is Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Any other new business?
That's it.
How about a motion to adjourn? Don, always there with the motion, a second.
Second.
And a Marvin for a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Adjourned.